Let us pray. Almighty God, as we gather together to mark the end of one mayoral year and the start of another, we thank you for Richard and for the work that he's put in over the last 12 months. We ask that your blessing guide him in his future endeavours. And as we look to David's turn as mayor, we ask for your blessing on him, on all the activities that he undertakes, and the activities that this council undertakes. And we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to make a start, and thank you, everybody, for coming this evening. Just please be aware, this event is being livestreamed. And please, as always, be polite and respectful to others during the meeting. And you have been all year, so thank you. It's made my job ever so easy. So I appreciate that, to each and everyone of you. Thank you. Right. So next item on the agenda is apologies for absence. Do we have any apologies for absence this evening?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have apologies for absence from councillor Fletcher, councillor Alan Habberton, and also delighted, because he's not with us, Stephen Carey. Delighted to tell you that Stephen has just had a little boy. I think he'd behold this carefully very well.
Definitely. Could you pass that on from all of us? And if people that's not here is a little bit poorly, will you give them our best as well? That's definitely a good reason to not be, isn't it, having a baby while. So, okay. Next item is declarations of interest. Does anyone have any of those for this evening? No one's interested in this evening. All right. Thank you. Okay. Minutes of the last meeting. Do we have someone to propose those?
Mr Mayor, I propose that the minutes of the meeting are on the 30th of April. We accept as a true correct record.
Thank you. And do we have a second? Okay. All those in favour? Yeah. Any against? Or any abstentions? Okay. Minutes are carried. Thank you, everybody. So the next item on the agenda. Mayor's speech. All right. Okay. Here we go. Right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, those watching on the livestream, officers and fellow councillors. I can't believe how fast my term of office has passed, but I've had so much fun. I would like to thank my mum, Linda, my daughter, Dani, for supporting me throughout my term, and joining me on many occasions as the mayor's consort. Thanks to my wife, Donna, who has been a great mayoress, or consort, or whatever words we decided to use in the taxi on the way down. And she's supported me as always. She's put up with me, coming and going at all times, and put up with my flawed rope over the past year. But then again, that's probably the past 20 years. So I promised her I'll sort that out after today. Probably won't. All right. I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for the help and support of councillor David Grindel. Not only has he been an excellent deputy mayor, but also a great friend. And alongside Pip Hallam-Davis, who has served as the deputy mayoress, consort, they have both stepped up to represent us as and when needed, and a big thank you to both of you. I would also like to thank those who nominated me for mayor, but also those who kindly voted to support this as well. Being the mayor is being part of a team, and the team is absolutely amazing. I would like to thank Anna, Paula and Chris, the democratic services and the legal officers, as well as the other council officers, who do the hard work in the background. I must also thank the drivers who have taken me to the civic engagements. And I would like to say a special thank you to Godfrey. More than a driver, more like a chauffeur. Always turning up in plenty of time, and not once have we been late to any engagement. The car is always immaculate. We've all been treated with the most respect, and I'm now going to have to get used to the people not opening car doors for me again. I would like to thank Martin, Chris, Robert and Pete for helping and supporting me. And I would like to thank Bev, Lorraine and Austin for the phone calls to check I'm okay. It really is appreciated. I would also like to thank the many people who have joined me as the mayor's consort. We have had a total of 211 civic engagements. We have met some amazing groups, organisations and individuals. We have attended three wedding anniversaries and several funerals, presented three grant aid checks, and presented birthday cards to people over age of 100. Presented baskets of flowers, cut many ribbons, gave many speeches and raised many flags, planted trees and flowers, opened the Tom Martin House, and more recently opened the former police station as a new business hub. I have had happy times and laughed a lot, and I've had sad times and cried too. On many occasions, I have been asked what has been my favourite thing as the mayor, and that is an easy one. I have been seeing who has joined me on the civic engagements and enjoying themselves, as we have been around the great borough and beyond. Over the course of my term of office, we have raised a massive £5,710.97, which will go a long way to help and support the great work that takes place at Brockstow Youth Homelessness. Two bike rides took place, and thanks to Brinsley, Eastwood and Kimberley councils for helping to promote the events. Everyone had a great time, and luckily, only two poor people saw me fall off my bike on their own last week, when I nearly fell in the canal. A great evening at Oliver's in Eastwood, where we had lots of fun, and thank you to those who came to what turned out to be an amazing evening. We also have one more event which was planned to take place last night, but had to be moved back to the 7th of July. So we will have some more money coming in following the event in the very near future. The mayor's Christmas appeal, I am told we received over three and a half tonnes of food which was collected and shared with various food banks across Brockstow Borough. And that's thank you to the schools for the kind and generous donations, and thank you to all those who made donations in the trolleys in the council reception. It has been good dressing up and wearing many hats. And when Graham Harvey was the mayor, I always remember how smart he looked in a hat. And he's always been my inspiration for wearing a hat. I hope I've served the people, this council and the councillors of the borough well, and done you all proud. So to wrap up, we have had a great year, and if the next mayor has off as much fun as I have, then he's in for a great time. Brockstow Borough is a great place to live, work and play, and I've seen the best of this in my term of office. Thank you all for giving me a great opportunity. Councillor Hallam.
There's no need to sound so nervous, Mr Mayor.
We'll see in a minute.
Really, really thank you for, on behalf of all of us, I think, for all of your efforts over the last year. I think it's fair to say that you've been a mayor like no other. It's certainly fair to say that no other mayor has such a golden smile. But honestly, I know what a lot of people were thinking this time, this time last year, when it was like, hang on a minute, isn't this the guy that wears hoodies all the time, and has a strange affiliation with Kangol? And what's he going to be like as the mayor? And I can honestly say that you've been absolutely dapper, and an utter gentleman throughout the whole thing, which I'm sure shocked many people. In fact, I know it shocked many people because the amount of times I've been out and around in Stapleford with yourself in the likes of the Mill Club, and people have said, especially those that know your slightly less soluble as past, have said, Richard, how on earth did you become the mayor? And your default answer, it turns out, has been to point at me and go, it's his fault, he nominated me. So now, being one that doesn't want to accept all of the blame, I would say that it takes more than simply a proposer to make something happen. And the vast majority of this chamber completely recognise the same thing that I did when I made that proposal and when it was almost unanimously supported, which is that you are not a person that lets anything get in your way. And certainly this year, you have not let anything get in your way. We didn't know what this year was going to turn out to be like. It was straight off the back of Covid. Not all the restrictions were lifted yet. It could have been another unfortunate lackluster year for civic events. Luckily for you, it hasn't been. And luckily for Brockstow, you have completely picked up and made up, in fact, for lost time. It would be remiss to not mention the absolutely sterling work that you've done for Brockstow Youth Homelessness. We can all recognise how much of a worthy cause it is. We all know, I think everybody knows, especially given your social media presence, everybody knows how much work you put in for them. And it's really, really gratifying to see that wonderful organisation's recognition of your efforts in making you their chair, which cements and substantiates your ongoing efforts on their behalf, aiding fundraising and awareness of the issues that they're tackling. So for that alone is worthy of thanks. But everything else that you've done over and above that is just a, that's the cherry on the cake, it really is. So it's no secret that you're going to miss the role. It's obvious by how much gusto you've given it, that you're going to miss it. I have been running a sweepstakes quite some time, because it's also no secret that councillor Grindel can't wait to get hold of the chain. And the sweepstakes I've been running is who would win the tug of war match. So hopefully it doesn't come to that. I know that you're more than happy to hand it over, because I know that, you know, you and David have been friends for a very, very long time. So I'm going to wrap up what I'm saying, but I would like to propose, on behalf of all of us here, a vote of thanks for your absolutely amazing efforts this year. Thank you. Thank you very much, Richard.
Mr Mayor, and this will be the last time you hear that from me, Richard. I would echo the sentiments expressed by councillor Hallam, and the thanks that we all owe you, not to these councillors and officers, but the people of Brockstow, for the tremendous job you've done over the last year. I remember talking to you at the beginning of the year, saying this will be the quickest year of your life. You'll get to Christmas, and then suddenly it's May again. But you've done your duties with an enthusiasm, and it's almost infectious. And whilst I'm never quite sure about your choice of hats, and sometimes your attire, as I frequently comment about, I am looking forward to, to Donna particularly, to seeing the results of his diet. Because I'm saying during the last year, that he's certainly grown a little bit bigger. If I'm a little bit thinner, I think I've lost it, and he's picked it up. But Mr Mayor, you have carried out your duties this year with an enthusiasm that's infectious, with due diligence, with a sense of fun, but never missing the seriousness of the occasions, particularly the difficulties when you were deputy to Janet Patrick, and then of course, the mayor yourself. It has been an incredibly difficult two years, but you've carried us off with an authority and a respect that we all recognise. So, Mr Mayor, it is my great pleasure to second the vote of thanks proposed by councillor Hallam. And thank you most sincerely for the tremendous job that you've done.
Thank you. That's really kind of you. Councillor called.
Well, Richard. You weren't expecting this.
No, you've known me longer than anyone else.
Right. You may not know this, but I've known Richard for most of his life. From being a naughty little boy, to a troublesome teen. But the man he has become is very different to the way he was back then. I think Richard's interest in his local community began with the birth of his daughter. He wanted to save caring and nurturing environment for her. Because Stapleford is a deprived area, and Richard has done much to alleviate some of that deprivation. His work with the youth clubs, providing time and energy, plus clothing and food, is remarkable. Now, why are you laughing?
I'm not. I was hiding, but I'm not.
Because it's all true. Richard, in his role as mayor, has raised funding for his charities, as well as placing them in the spotlight. His enthusiasm and energy never diminishes. He is kind, generous, compassionate, and non-judgmental. Always prepared to go the extra mile. Finally, on a very personal note, I want to say thank you for your kindness and support to me during a time of anguish and fear. All the very best in your future roles, whatever they may be, Richard. Well done.
Thank you. Wow. Thank you. Sorry. I can see councillor Patrick over there.
Mr Mayor, I was, as we all know, the mayor before you. And so I was particularly interested and following you. And it has been so exciting and interesting. You've been a really, a really great mayor. First of all, you've been enthusiastic, and that is needed, particularly in hard times. Secondly, you have worked tremendously hard. You have never stopped. Whatever time I ring you up, except last weekend, brother, you replied very quickly. And what's more, you've got results. You've got results. I'd just like to say a very big thank you, because I know that you've worked so hard in very difficult circumstances. It's not just about raising money, it's about energy and effort and keeping going. You did all that, and we are proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard, I say a few words, because it's all been said, but I understand your last engagement yesterday was to the old police station in Stapleford. And I understand that there were quite a few people looking around all the rooms, in case they could find your names scored anywhere on the wall. But I understand that they weren't able to find any, so that's fine. As councillor Patrick has just mentioned, we've had before you two mayors in the term of this council. Mick, who managed 10 months before Covid descended on us, was a fantastic mayor in those 10 months. Janet, who had the period mayor that we hope never, ever materialises again, but also in the circumstances fantastically, fantastically. And I thought, who's going to top that? And, Richard, you have, and more so. And what's more, you've actually put, I would say, a new dimension onto the office of mayor of Brockstow. And it doesn't have to be stuffy. It doesn't have to be formal. It can be completely different to that, and probably achieve just as well results, if not better results. And you've done an absolutely fantastic job, and I'm proud to call you a friend.
Councillor Carey.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Are you still Mr Mayor for a few moments more, I believe?
Yeah. The longer you talk, the longer I'm the mayor, so you go for it.
I'd just like to pass on my thanks to you and the work you've done, particularly for being at Caterlane Rec. for being at Caterlane Rec in my division a couple of times in the last year to celebrate councillor former councillor Joan Briggs who we all miss very well thank you very much for the two occasions that you were there in support of Joan's memory thank you
That's my pleasure thank you Let's get David up here right so thank you everybody that's really kind of you and I've said it all the time it's teamwork the the team's amazing I just turn up wearing the chain and do the easy bit there's loads of people in the background that make it all happen so you know thanks to them as well because they do a cracking job so yeah and thank you everyone for all your kind words right so the next item this is what we're all here for today oh sorry okay so we've got to vote on the thanks for the outgoing mayor okay all in support I suppose
It's unanimous
It's unanimous thank you everybody Yeah well we'll take that as well but no no thank you everybody it's been an absolute honour and a pleasure so yeah brilliant right so item number six
This is No item four
Oh item five what's that My speech have I got the wrong thing here sorry I'm looking at the wrong thing sorry Oh it's on page yeah that's it this there look yeah okay so election yeah election of mayor that's I'm reading the wrong thing sorry I was trying to keep the chain longer right yeah okay page six right item four okay so we're asking for nominations for the election of mayor for Brockstow Borough Council until the annual meeting in 2023 and do we have a proposer
Yes thank you Mr Mayor Mr Mayor Alderman Freeman councillors officers ladies and gentlemen and anyone else has managed to get a ticket this evening it gives me great pleasure to nominate my colleague councillor David Grindal of mayor of the borough of Brockstow for 2022 23 David was born in Gosport Hampshire somewhere that's been in the news recently but we'll probably talk about that after this evening and later moved to Plymouth where he attended school before going on to train with the NHS he has two grown-up children four grandchildren and one great-grandchild after years of working in Bristol Newcastle and Manchester he became an employment and training officer in Mansfield and moved into Stapleford in 2003 in 2005 David became a councillor representing the Stapleford South East Ward on Stapleford Town Council and he has been town mayor of Stapleford twice some would say that he deserves a medal for that alone he was first elected to Brockstow Borough Council in 2011 David believes passionately in serving the people of Brockstow and he's been involved in the digging community allotment the disability forum Stapleford Combined Services Club Stapleford Community Group and supported St Helen's Church David also supported the Royal Marines Association and was instrumental in bringing the Walter Parker Weasley memorial plaque to the town square David has chosen the mental health in the community of Brockstow based in Middle Street Beeston as his charity and I know he will also be supporting other organisations for example Forever Stars a charity based in Beeston who give support to those who have experienced a death of a young child he also hopes to raise awareness for the white ribbon campaign to end domestic violence I know from many years of friendship and political activism with David that he will make an excellent mayor and will put all his efforts in promoting Brockstow and supporting its residents he is approachable friendly sometimes hilarious and sometimes very frustrating but there is always one thing you can rely on is loyalty Mr Mayor it gives me great pleasure to nominate councillor David Grindal to be the new mayor of Brockstow
Do we have a second for that proposal
Yes I have seconded that members of the public councillors and Mr Mayor well you're still Mr Mayor David it gives me great pleasure to second the nomination for you to become the mayor of the borough last July in your capacity of deputy mayor you came to mark the occasion of my dad's 90th birthday your visit made it a special occasion and I know how much he enjoyed the chat with us you also share my passion in supporting mental health here in the community during the last few years I think we have all experienced a degree of mental health difficulties you have been to visit and support Middle Street Resource Centre during these difficult times and we thank you very much for this so when you asked us to be your chosen charity of the year we're all so happy to exact everyone at the centre is excited and looks forward to working with you to raise or to further raise the profile of mental health support we offer to the whole community to finish I'd like to extend a warm invitation to all of you to come and visit to see what we do thank you
Okay well councillor Jackson
Yeah thank you very much Mr Mayor and can I just also second David's nomination to be mayor of Brockstow David hadn't realised until until I heard the nomination just how much he'd moved around the country but you put it all right when you chose to move to Brockstow all those years ago I I know you'll you'll do a great job as mayor of Brockstow you did an exceptional job as mayor of of Stapleford twice and I know that because you couldn't move in the town without bumping into you somewhere usually more than once in a day so you'll throw yourself into being mayor he followed Richard in your own style I'm sure and I know you'll you'll do it incredibly well he's already making plans and he's already told me what I've got to do with his civic service and I'll be delighted to do that later in the year as well David but you have the support of our group and the whole council of your year of mayor
Thank you So are we going to are we moving to the vote yeah okay so it gives me a great pleasure actually to do this so all those in favour for councillor David Grindal to be the next mayor of Brockstow Isn't it that's unanimous so thank you everybody so David Grindal I declare the councillor David Grindal be elected mayor of the borough of Brockstow until the annual meeting 2023 if you'd like to come up here for a couple swap all yours
That's what they gave me to read tonight
I will now invite the newly elected mayor to read aloud and sign the declaration of acceptance of office
I David Grindal I've been appointed to the office of mayor of the council of the borough of Brockstow declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of the accordance to the best of my judgement and ability I undertake to observe the code of conduct which is expected of members of Brockstow Borough Council I'm coming I'm coming I gotta pull my pants up
It's an absolute honour to do this yeah He looked quite small Mr Mayor
I haven't noticed they've given me a geriatric chair but I'm too young for one
I've heard this is the best mayor's photo because the light on it was perfect you ready
I'm ready
Sure great pleasure to unveil this picture of David I don't know if you can see it at the back but I don't want to drop it
Turn it round the other way it'd be better
There you go he looks like you
Thank you very much alright it's my pleasure
No it hasn't got my hair cut My pleasure you enjoy your year
Thank you I will thank you very much thank you I am I am very proud of every all councillors here who have decided in their wisdom to vote for me as mayor of Brockstow and if you hadn't you wouldn't have got out this evening but but truthfully it's important that councillors do make a good judgement and they have this time and and I I've got a speech written here and it's gone it's here somewhere so first of all for those people online chief exec I would like to which in fact let's let's get these things right the people online are some from down south with a name like mine but a lot of people do not know who some members of this council are now obviously on my left is the chief executive who you would never never upset and obviously she has been here some time and she knows all the rules and we all sometimes try and break them to get our own way but Ruth Hyde who has done a lot of work here and I'm glad to see her on my left now Sash Scusa who's here is watching that I don't do anything wrong legally and well that's fine now if I go back to my speech officially speech is it's very important to be mayor but if you as a mayor whoever you are can do the good work for the residents and the businesses and the people of the borough that is exactly why we're here now I'll cut it short chief exactly she nodded did she nod that I cut it short we there are two reasons main reasons why I wish to be mayor and one is to get bigger support for mental health in the community this is across the borough mental health and maybe the two or three people within this building who do have some sort of problem and it's not just one thing mental health carries a variety of issues and at Middle Street they call it Middle Street that's the name of the building what's important is as you see outside when you go outside in a minute as you'll see it's mental health in the community that is exactly what it's about now I thought well I'm gonna do my best to help and Paul Welsh over there him and I and Roger and Sylvia have actually started sort of three or four months ago and everything didn't turn out right but they will do by the end of this week I hope it's important because we will be visiting the whole of the borough we will be taking the message out to the whole of the borough and hopefully by the end of next week you will be able to purchase a badge and and I will be in all areas so councillors when you turn up to to an event and I'm there don't worry I will be selling you a badge and if you've got no change don't worry I've got a card holder machine in my pocket Secondly what is very important is the white ribbon now we're working with Brockstow's Women's Project at the moment for the simple reason is that we have an administrative issue which is nothing to do with me it's to do with the bosses here so I'm working with them and taking them out between now and Christmas right throughout the borough we will be taking out pledge cards we will get people to pledge no more abuse no more abuse anywhere there's so many there's a variety of abuse and I'm not gonna put up with it and I'm sure you're not gonna put up with it and we're talking about all people adults and children no more abuse and the more that one can get to Eastwood Kimberley everywhere to get this message out and this message is not just for two weeks in November it's for the whole year of my office now I could go on but I'm not going to so Oh yes I forgot about that yeah 57 pages that is Yes I'll do that thank you well as you know my my message this evening I've lost it in my head so it doesn't matter the most important thing is that councillor Richard McCray as we all know it's an excellent excellent job so Richard we have a few little gifts here for you but it's not my photograph right no so I shall slide over Richard on behalf of all the work that you have done and for all the staff and all the councillors in the community and at the council wish you so much goodness and happiness and we know you've enjoyed your year and I think we've got a little badge in here that's if the pot's open there you are Richard
Thank you
Wear it with pride
I will do that's really kind of you
This wasn't how I planned everything chief executive but it turned out this way Oh yes now this is very important this is the appointment of deputy mayor and right so we're not nominations please for deputy mayor please councillor Marshall thank you
Thank you and may I be the first to call you thank you Mr Mayor in your in your new role I'll call you chair going forward but for for today's special event I'll call you Mr Mayor
Thank you very much
Members and officers of the council freemen and women aldermen and women and people of the Brockstow I'm really really honoured to be able to propose Theresa Theresa Cullen as deputy mayor but but before I formally do that David I would like to pass on my congratulations to you of course and anything I can do over the next year to help you and assist you during your term of office please just call on me if if you need if you need to do so I'd also like to thank Richard actually I know that Mila Radulovich spoke about it and touched on it earlier but you know he was a an excellent deputy mayor to to my friend Janet Patrick as well when she was mayor in the most difficult of years probably that Brockstow has has experienced during the pandemic and so Richard thank you very much for that as well but in terms of the appointment of deputy mayor Theresa I'm absolutely thrilled to be able to do that I'm thrilled because you're a colleague I'm thrilled because you're a political friend of mine but most importantly you're a personal friend of mine and I can't think of anyone better suited for the role so I'm I'm incredibly proud to do that Theresa for those of you who don't know Theresa she has of course Brockstow running through her veins from when she was incredibly a young teenage mum bringing up kids in in a flat on Valley Road and then Um, and then bringing up the rest of your family in and around the borough. You have Brockstow, of course, coursing through your veins and, um, you've always been an incredible, uh, incredibly passionate about, about the area. Um, and I know that you have a, a daily kind of like, um, a daily kind of test for yourself to do something good for others, um, in the community or those that you come across. And, you know, that's a wonderful trait to test oneself, to be good and to do meaningful acts of good on a daily basis. You are, of course, a remarkable advocate for your ward, Beeston Rylands. I've seen that firsthand when I've visited and you've got a litany of, of achievements that you have, that you have been personally, that you've personally driven. Whether that's the Pensioners Friday Lunch Club, which I've enjoyed on several, um, occasions. Um, your immense pride in Leyton Crescent Community Centre there. And, you know, is, is a wonderful facility for your, for your residents as well. Um, and indeed trying to influence for the betterment of Beeston Rylands when the best development is going to happen. Always trying to think ahead, always trying to do good for, for, for the people. Um, and I know that when you are deputy mayor, I know that your effort, your experience, your gusto will be, um, as a great ambassador for the rest of the borough. And I know that you'll take on that with gusto. So really, it's, um, enough for me to say, um, really that I've got the immense privilege of, um, of nominating Theresa for that position for the upcoming year, twenty-two, twenty-three, and I hope that you will all join me in doing so.
Thanks for the barber collar. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. David, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks.
Um, thank you fellow members, officers, ladies and gentlemen, honourable guests. I have the great pleasure and I'm delighted to second you, Theresa, to second your nomination for deputy mayor. Um, I only really got to know you properly when we started working together on housing after two thousand and nineteen. And in that time, I think we did develop a really good relationship and we got to know each other, what we were both about and our motivations. Uh, and from that, what I can say about Theresa is that she's definitely driven, she's passionate, she's determined, dedicated, hardworking and very enthusiastic. And I think all those qualities are really necessary to be a good councillor and also no doubt to be a good deputy mayor. And I think you, you'll be fine, absolutely fine. Now, she's been a member of the Labour Party for twenty years, but I'm not going to hold that against you today. Um, and you have been highly influential in your other roles, uh, within the voluntary and charity sectors, including, of course, the chief executive of Transform Training Limited, where you, I believe you help young people who've not really had the best start in life to get skills, um, become more, feel more supported, um, given direction and confidence. It's a really important role and you do a great job there, Theresa. Now, when not working, I've often phoned her and she's in Spain, but she tells me she's still working. I'm not entirely convinced. But very often, she's more often making sandwiches at Beeston Rylands Community Centre, uh, or doing other charitable work. And you know what they say? If you want a job doing, ask a busy person. So now you've got another job as deputy mayor. You're always approachable, very supportive, and I know you'll make a great, excellent deputy mayor. And the year's going to be a tough one for many people in Brockstow as well. Um, rising food prices, energy bills going up, et cetera. People are going to need to feel supported. And I think yourself and David, uh, will make a great team and do a great deal of good work within the community. So congratulations on your nomination. Enjoy it and good luck.
Are there any more? Lydia Ball, councillor Lydia Ball. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hiding away you are.
Uh, fellow councillors, um, ex-mayors and ladies and gentlemen. I'm thinking, comes, I've seen lots of mayors and deputy mayors, Theresa, and I'm really, really happy and really, um, pleased to be able to second your nomination to deputy mayor. And I know that from the things that Greg has said and how passionate you are, uh, I know that you're hardworking. I know that you care about the residents of this borough and I know that you care about the, the, um, independent living members of this borough. And I'm sure they will be delighted to see you because you can go around and see them now, can't you? And see all the good work that has been done all the years, I think, for Brockstow with housing. I always think we looked after the residents in this borough. I think we should all give ourselves a pat on the back occasionally. And, um, anyway, I hope you have a really good time and, of course, it starts tomorrow morning. Make sure you're up early, half past four. I'll be looking for you. Okay. Have a great time, Theresa. Thank you.
Uh, I call for the vote now. All those in favour, please. Namas, thank you very much. Carrie.
So if you can just say Carrie, so Theresa Cullen will be elected as deputy mayor.
Okay.
Until the annual meeting.
Yeah.
And invited to come forward.
I will now call upon the newly elected deputy mayor, uh, to come to read aloud and sign the declaration of acceptance of office.
She's okay. So she's doing well.
She does, she's a bit quick.
Yeah. So that's a sign.
Yeah, yeah, we've done that.
I, Theresa Cullen, have been appointed to the office of deputy mayor of the council of the borough of Brockstow. Declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfill the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. I undertake to observe the code of conduct, which is expected of members of Brockstow Borough Council. I'd like to say a few words. I'd like to say to Lydia, ten past five at my house.
Oh, right. Oh, well, it's different.
I'd like to say to everybody, thank you, thank you for appointing me as deputy, um, mayor. I'm conscious of the honour of it. It's a great honour. And as you know, I love doing work in the community, so I'm going to enjoy it greatly. I've been doing a little bit of work with David so far and I can see that I'm going to have quite a lot of work to do in keeping him in order and making sure he behaves himself. Um, but don't worry, on your behalf, I'll ensure that that all goes smoothly and that, um, we, we make a great team. We have, we've already been having fun together. We make a great team. We had great fun doing a rehearsal for this.
Don't tell me about it.
And he knows now how bossy I am. And I am, I do work hard and I am driven. And, um, I'm a very forthright and bossy woman. And in my family, I grew up in Totun, and in my family of, um, five brothers and just me, I know very well how to keep everybody in order. And I always said that if I was a man, everybody would think it was absolutely fine, but I'm a very forthright woman. So we're going to have a good year. I thank you all for your faith in me and, um, that's it really. Thank you. Got to get my necklace.
Right, great pleasure. And I'm giving you the super chain as deputy mayor of Brockstow Borough Council.
Right. Let me get back. Oh, I've got to take this off again. No. Oh, hang on. No, that's all. Is that it? Can I sit down? I can sit. That's it.
Thank you very much, Theresa, deputy mayor. Item six, election of leader. Do we have a proposer for the leader of the council? Councillor Steve Carr, please.
Oh, you forgot who it was then. Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, ladies and gentlemen, fellow councillors, older men and freemen. Um, if it's been said once about Milan Radulovich, well, it's been said once. Michael Ritch, you may remember him. He was once leader of the council and he was a group leader of the, uh, Liberal Democrat Group. Once described trying to, um, look after the Liberal Democrat Group as like herding cats. I'm, I'm afraid I was probably one of the cats that he was trying to herd, but that was then and this is now. So you can imagine what it's like in that case, leading an alliance of fourteen Labour councillors, seven Liberal Democrats, two independents and one independent alliance councillor. Not only has he done that exceptionally well, but he's done that despite his obvious, uh, health problems. And in fact, he had to hand over some of his, uh, duties to myself and to Greg and to David, whilst, whilst he had his operation. But you would never have thought it. I think y- your dedication to the job is such that he must be the only person I've known that's tried to run the council from a hospital bed, put it like that. But, you know, we, we did it. We're trying to keep, we're trying to keep it away from you, but no, it was, it was never going to work, was it? I, um, have no hesitation in, uh, nominating Milan Radulovich to carry on being leader of the council. We've had very, very difficult three years, to say the least, with, with Covid. I, I fear the next year and the years after that are going to be equally as bad for different reasons with regards to the economy, et cetera. And we need a strong, uh, leader to keep us all together, to deliver what's right for the residents of Brockstow. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a second, please? Uh, councillor Marshall, thank you very much.
Thank you. I, um, would like to, to second, um, Milan as well for leader. Um, and I'm, I can, uh, testify that when I'd been talking to my, uh, officer members and directors of, of finance for updates when Milan was on his bed, he often knew what I was talking about to Zul from Mr Dar before, before I did as well. And yeah, he never quite managed to let go of the reins, um, even when he was, uh, dicing with, uh, dicing with death on his, on, 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 in, in the hospital ward. And I think, you know, we all know about the, um, about the, uh, effort and the dedication, um, and the commitment that Milan has to Brockstow. And we've seen it time and time again, um, in this chamber. But interestingly, you know, I don't think we can, we laugh and we joke about it and he can always take a joke. And he's always told this chamber to retain its sense of humour. But in all seriousness, when you talk to the surgeons and, uh, the individuals at, you know, our wonderful NHS, it is not an underestimate, it is not an understatement to say, um, there were times when they didn't think Milan was going to pull through. And I think it's testament to his constitution and indeed, um, his own resilience, um, and his own strength really, that he's coming through. And he's looking better and better each day and long, uh, may that continue for the next year, uh, and into the future of Brockstow Council. So I'm absolutely delighted to, uh, second the nomination for Milan, um, as leader. I learn a lot from him, uh, and, and I respect him deeply. So thank you, Milan.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishes to speak, please? All right, go on. We carry on to the vote then, please. All those in favour? Keep your hand up, please, if you're voting for. Yeah, it's the majority. Carrie, thank you very much.
Or any against.
Oh, any against. Oh, yes, I forgot about that. I apologise, yeah. Any against? Any abstentions? Carried, uh, twenty-two votes, sixteen abstentions. Thank you very much. Leader of the council, Milan, yes? Can I help you?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I promise I won't take longer for your time. Just to thank my colleagues, friends and, uh, associates for once again placing a faith in, in myself. It has been an extremely difficult two years. I'm sure you're aware of that. And the situation and the pressure and tension in Eastern Europe and Ukraine in particular is certainly another one that will attack text or tax the whole of the Western democracies and indeed will impact largely on this council's future. And as we move into a period of uncertainty, uh, we will do so, I hope, with a sense of fairness. I've tried in the recommendations that were put forward, to be fair, to give every member of this council the opportunity and at least having the ability to participate in some way in the decision-making in this council. Something that's very passionate to me. When I first got elected in nineteen eighty-six, uh, to this council, I remember the first thing that was told to me was, you stop at the back and you don't say a word until you've been on for at least a year. And I found that completely insulting to, to, um, to my intellect and to my beliefs. And during that, that period of starting off in politics, you weren't allowed to be a front bench spokesperson, you know? And any time that you wanted to speak, even in your own group, you were formally called by a chairman. I have tried to break with that tradition, Mr. Mayor, by actually actively encouraging debate to take place among even our political opposition because they have a right to represent their community. And you'll see, Mr. Mayor, as we progress, that that opportunity will be extended, I hope, to every single member of this council to actively be involved in the decision-making process as best I can under the tight legislation. It will be an immensely challenging time, not just with the, the devolution bill and, of course, we know about East Midlands Level Up Fund, but also with the Staple for Transdear, the Eastman and Kimberley Level Up Funds. And, of course, as I spoke earlier, the situation regarding the impact of Brexit on the quality of, of life of residents in this borough and, of course, the situation in Ukraine. So, Mr. Mayor, in doing so, I just wanted to say a big thank you and I will endeavour to at least be fair. It was once said, uh, of me in politics, it was Robert Pettit, I don't know if you can remember Robert Pettit. Robert Pettit, he once said to me, he says, Milan, you're the fairest politician I've ever met in your life. You treat us all like you don't. So, Mr. Mayor, with that, with those few thank yous, I will endeavour, as I say, to engage people wherever possible and to actively encourage participation in your own area that decisions will affect generations to come.
Recognition of, uh, political leaders, um, we are requested to note that the leader and deputy leaders of the main political groups who would like to speak.
Uh, yes, thank you, councillor Carr, um. Yeah, yeah. Uh, yes, I, I am leader of the Liberal Democrat Group. We have a revolving, uh, deputy leader, uh, situation, uh, in our group. And this year it is the turn of councillor Tim Hallen to be deputy leader of the. and this year it is the turn of councillor Tim Hallan to be deputy leader of the Liberal Democrat Group. Sorry? Say it a bit louder then we could hear it then. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor, just to confirm that myself as leader of the Conservative group, councillor Mark Crowe as deputy leader of the Conservative group.
Thank you very much, councillor Richard Jackson.
For the record, sorry, I can't start, I've started to struggle a bit. Myself as leader of the Labour Group and of course councillor Greg Marshall as deputy leader.
Thank you very much, Milan Radulovich and everyone's fine in that, thank you. So this is the end of item seven, we move on to item eight. I'm going to bring forward item eleven on the agenda. There has been an amendment submitted that affects other items on this agenda. Therefore, let us consider the constitution, thank you. Do we have a proposer, please?
Yes, sir.
Councillor Carr, please.
Thank you, but members may recall that on the meeting of April the thirteenth, we actually adopted the new structure of cabinet system and as a result of that, the constitution needed to be mended quite substantially with a lot of work and thanks to all those councillors that were on the task and finish group with regards to that. And I have though got amendments which I think have been circulated to everybody, which is why we had to bring item eleven prior to appointing people to committees, et cetera. They, I'll read these out, the following amendment is proposed by me, page ninety-three and also on page hundred and eleven, we are removing the words or the chairs or vice-chairs of committees. The law as it stands at the moment and the statutory guidance in May two thousand and nineteen says that only members of the executive or committees of the executive, so that's the cabinet or committees of the cabinet cannot be on overview and scrutiny. So we've actually taken out the chairs and vice-chairs of, for example, planning and those committees. Page one three three, similarly licensing appeals, there is no restriction on, legal restriction on councillors being on the licensing and appeals committees. So we've deleted the words leader, deputy leader and cabinet members may not serve on this committee and replaced with similar wording to planning, which is members of the licensing and appeals committee must complete training prior to attending the meeting of the committee. Do we want to take that vote first or should I, yeah, and then carry on with, I need a second for that.
I'll second that, thank you.
Thank you very much. So continue councillor Carr. Is anybody else wish to speak, sorry, yeah, yeah.
On the amendment, this is, isn't it, yeah.
Anybody? Okay, thank you very much. I take a vote, please, all those in favour?
This is the amendment.
Yes, the amendment. That's carried. Those against? Abstentions, oh sorry, I haven't finished, councillor. Too quick on there. Amendment carried, twenty-three in favour, sixteen against, thank you very much. And back to councillor Carr now, please.
Thank you, I shan't say much else, I'm assuming that everybody's actually read the constitution from cover to cover and obviously a lot of the things have changed because of the new arrangements, but we have changed some timings of speakers, et cetera, et cetera, because at one stage, I think particularly with regards to motions, after the proposal and the second had finished speaking and the proposer summing up, there'd be five minutes for the members to actually contribute to the debate, which is not a good idea. So this is what we have before us and as I say, a lot of work has gone into this. It was a very congenial task and finish group, so I'm actually quite surprised that the opposition have voted against it because they were involved all the way through this process and I commend this and propose that we adopt the new constitution, if I can have a second, please.
Thank you councillor Carr.
I'll second that, Chair.
Thank you very much. Anybody, yes, anyone else wish to speak? Yeah, councillor Jackson, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr Mayor, I hadn't really intended to say very much on this. The reason we're voting against it, having sat on the working group, is that things have changed from what the working group actually proposed. We had a lengthy debate on this, he's shaking his head, but it's true. We had a lengthy debate on this at the last council meeting, so I don't see much point in rehearsing all those same arguments. And we get here this evening to find out that something else has changed. We now have two vice-chairmen on the overview and scrutiny committee, that's never been mentioned before, it's not even in this document, which several times refers to the vice-chair of that committee and the powers of the vice-chair of that committee, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm not quite sure why that change has come about, it certainly dilutes further the role of the opposition, in my opinion, in that committee and in the running of the council. And I'm disappointed, as I said back in last month's meeting, disappointed that we weren't able to support this. But I think for those reasons, we're not going to support it this evening, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councillor Owen, please.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr Mayor, may I congratulate you on your appointment this evening? You would have thought that a council that had got the problems that this council has at the moment, it would be the last thing that it would be wanting to do in the final year of an administration to completely change the constitution and the way in which it is working. And I remind you of the problems. I remind you of the problems, the fact that residents aren't able to make contact with this council very effectively. The fact that there are many that are left without their bins being emptied.
Point of order, Mr Mayor, point of order, this is completely not talking about the resolution that we have before us. This is a debate about the constitution of this council, nothing to do with phones, nothing to do with anything else, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I did preface my remarks by saying that I thought the last thing that this council should be focusing on at this time is a change in the constitution. What it should be focusing on is sorting out the problems that it has, which I was trying to highlight.
Councillor Owen, excuse me, please keep to the agenda, the item on the agenda, please.
I'm more than happy to, as I say, this should not be the focus of this council at the moment. And I'll make a few comments about the constitution. I think councillor Carr said it's been read from cover to cover. I don't know by whom, because I have spotted at least a couple of errors. It's not been proofread. I'd just point out page one two one where there's an error. I'm assuming on page one two three that there is, well, I'm assuming it is a proofreading error. Last resort, well, yeah, last resort option and consideration, the second bullet point. I'd be grateful for an explanation of what that means if it is not a mistake in terms of typing and making up the document. So we're being presented tonight with a document that hasn't even been proofread and we're being asked to support it. We have not had the benefit of the IRP making their recommendations for special responsibility allowances. So we don't know how much this new scheme, this new system is going to cost, yet we're being asked to make a decision tonight to introduce it on the basis of not knowing what it is going to cost. The IRP should have produced a report and we should have had those findings in front of us. I find, looking at what is proposed, that the whole issue of scrutiny appears to be quite weak. The proposals in front of us, as I see, are for one committee of overview and scrutiny. I know it says in the report that at the discretion of the chairman, there may be working groups or subcommittees set up, but that's not something that has been enshrined in the constitution. There need to be scrutiny committees of all of the major spending areas of this council. But having said that about overview and scrutiny, I do notice that there's going to be an awful lot of scrutiny in January two thousand and twenty-three, according to the schedule of meetings. We've got an overview and scrutiny meeting on the twelfth, we've got an overview and scrutiny meeting on the thirtieth and we've got an overview and scrutiny meeting planned for the thirty-first of January. And as one who is likely to be appointed tonight to the overview and scrutiny committee, there is only so much excitement that someone of my age can take in any one month and that seems to be going a little bit over the top. So of course, we're not going to support this tonight because it doesn't provide for transparency, it doesn't provide for significant involvement of the opposition in the whole process of monitoring this council and we know, our residents know at the moment, this council is dysfunctional. It is dysfunctional and all you are focusing on is changing the constitution in order that you can cover up that dysfunctionality rather than expose it to what it should be exposed to, real vigorous and intensive scrutiny. So no, we won't support it tonight.
Thank you councillor Owen. Councillor David Watts, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and congratulations on your new position and it's a great delight to see you as the mayor. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but having heard councillor Owen's contribution, it's important that we do remind people, I think, that when the amendments to move to a cabinet system were proposed, they were fully supported by the opposition who recognised that it will make this council swifter, more dynamic in addressing the problems that every council faces. It's worth reminding, of course, that this is the system that we had before and it was the Conservatives who changed to a committee system, which we're now having to abandon because it just doesn't work in the modern system. So I'm not inclined to take any lectures from the Conservatives as to the functionality of this council, which is most clearly not a dysfunctional council. I think that's the same sort of attitude that we saw from Lee Anderson MP today in declaring there was no problem with food banks. It is shameful that such comments are made, it is a real insult to the staff of this council who do a sterling job. And if councillor Owen is worried about the amount of meetings, if he's not up to the job, I'm sure his leader can find somebody else who will do it far better. The only other point I wanted to observe is I think councillor Jackson has made a genuine mistake in talking about there being two vice-chairs for overview and scrutiny, that's not what's proposed and I think he's just made a mistake on that.
Thank you very much councillor Watts.
Yeah, part of the clarification, Mr Mayor, I've got a note from the deputy monitoring officer telling me that that's exactly the case. Just to confirm that the overview and scrutiny committee will have one chair and two vice-chairs and it is suggested that your group appoints a vice-chair this evening.
Well, Mr Mayor, the list is in front of, the list is on agenda item eight.
Excuse me, can you sit down, please councillor Watts? Thank you. Leader of the council, Milan, wish to speak.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and if the opposition wishes to rectify it, I'm quite happy to remove the position for a Conservative member as vice-chair of a committee. Quite happy to do that, quite happy to do it. The reason I said in my opening comments tonight was to give the opportunity, which is something you don't do at county, the opposition a platform in working to the agenda. And it's interesting to note, Chair, tonight, the changes will be made for the strong leader models in line with his own government's recommendations. Of course, we all know the honourable member from Nettle doesn't believe in the Conservative hierarchy or the Prime Minister and so he doesn't take any notice of anything he says. But actually, actually, the county council itself, and believe it or not, the chairman of the working group who's looking at changing to a cabinet system is councillor Philip Owen. Councillor Philip Owen himself, the ultimate hypocrite, the ultimate hypocrite. And it's also noticeable that there is no opposition ability to be involved in any of the decision-making process at the county council. Instead, they want to force an elected mayor on us and we all know who wants to be elected mayor. Well, it ain't going to happen. But, Mr Mayor, the word dysfunctional, what councillor Owen means is we managed quite well without him. That's his version of dysfunctional. In fact, we managed very well without him, balances are up, everything in the council looks fairly good, on a straight, ships on an even keel. We're moving forward quite dramatically now with our employment, as you said yesterday, Stapleford open, Stapleford offices and of course our green and environmental projects, all of which are going remarkably well. But when you talk about the IRP, we're not talking about instituted revenues, we're actually talking about the independent remuneration panel. And the reason they are met is still later on this year, Chair. But I have been assured, at the highest possible level, that it will not affect his councillor Kerris, councillor Cublins and councillor Owen. Two of them, or three of those, taking members' allowances and expenses of a hundred and forty-five thousand pound between three of them. I can assure you, councillor, you're on forty-odd thousand pound a year. Chair.
Uh, excuse me, quiet please, when the leader is, any member is speaking, including the leader, I will not have anybody interfering or making noises or funny jokes. This is a very serious thing that we're discussing and I don't want to see it go down the hill and it's not going to go down the hill while I'm chair, okay?
All I'm saying, Mr Mayor, I have it on very good authority that it will not affect him financially one iota. And, Mr Mayor, I've tried from the outset to offer a knowledge branch to the opposition on the overview and scrutiny. Yes, you're right, Richard, initially the proposals, working proposals, was for chair and vice-chair. And the reason I asked for it to be a chair and two vice-chairs was to ensure that your group had at least a say in putting that agenda together. Something you deny at the county council to all the opposition members. Yes, you do. Well, we'll watch then, we'll watch what positions you bring forward. But that's what it is, Mr Mayor, it's petty, it's almost childish behaviour from the opposition because there is nothing to cling on to, there's no massive failures to look at, there's no financial bad performance, everything is moving forward progressively, constructively and we are trying to involve everybody in this council in the decision-making process. What they mean is they would like to keep it all to themselves and the little group and it was noticeable between two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and nineteen, not once did they offer the opposition. not once did they offer the opposition any chance to have any involvement in assembly of any agenda through the committee system. Mr Mayor, all I want to hear tonight from the opposition is saying, well, we don't want to be part of vice chair of scrutiny, and I will make sure that's removed.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak before councillor Carr sums up? Councillor Patrick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not going to speak against anybody, but I do understand, as I am down to be chair of scrutiny, when I first became councillor, 11 years ago, we had scrutiny committees. And always, in January or around then, we had two days put aside when we scrutinised the whole work of the borough. And it took two whole days to do it. And that is simply why there are two days usually, and it takes a lot of work. That's why there are two days, no other reason.
Councillor Pringle, thank you very much, councillor Patrick.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and congratulations on your appointment this evening. I have read the 300 and odd pages that we're talking about this evening. And I've got three questions. They may seem sort of very basic and simple questions. But if we look at page 105, and it's para 21.9, it says, "The member who referred the matter under rule", and I'm not sure whether it's a zero or it's an O, but that's what it is. It says, "Rule O above may address the overview and scrutiny committee or scrutiny subcommittee in respect of the call for action for up to 10 minutes." Then if you turn the page to page 106, and it's 23.4, it says, "Rules naught to naught, or zero to naught above, shall apply to the consideration of a crime and disorder matter by the crime and disorder scrutiny committee, does they apply to the consideration of a call for action by the overview and scrutiny committee or scrutiny subcommittee?" Then if you go to page 107, 23.7, it says, "Where the overview and scrutiny committee makes a report or recommendations to the council, or provides a copy of a report or recommendations under rule O or zero above, the committee must notify the council, body or person to whom it makes or provides a copy of the report or recommendation that the council, body or person must..." And then there's a subparus. Can you tell me, please, what is rule zero or rule O? And, you know, if we're going to be sort of looking at something and recommending it goes forward, surely we need to know what that rule zero is or rule O. It's either zero or Oscar. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor. Councillor Carr, would you like to sum up, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. It's a shame that this debate's descended into a political bash, if you like. A political football match. With regards to specific questions about specific parts of the constitution, members have had these papers for over a week now. And it's a shame that they didn't raise these items with the monitoring officer prior to this meeting. So I shan't be answering any specific questions on those matters. I shan't be answering those questions. If you need to speak to the monitoring officer, then do it after this meeting. And it would have been, it would have been actually advisable if you'd done it before this meeting. But hey ho, that's the sort of opposition that we've got. The overview and scrutiny committee. First of all, councillor Owen complains that there isn't enough scrutiny, and then complains that there are too many meetings. It's either one or the other, isn't it? You can't have them both. There is strong scrutiny in this constitution, and that has been done on purpose. However, you're complaining now the fact that we've offered you a vice chairmanship of the overview and scrutiny committee, and you don't seem to be very happy with that. So as the leader has said, we'll take it off you because that will save a special responsibility allowance. Because councillor Owen, yet again, needs to be very concerned about how much this new constitution's going to cost us. There are less meetings for a start off, so that's going to cost the council as a whole less. So can I draw your attention to page 102 in the constitution, which is regards to the overview and scrutiny committee? And I'm very sorry, Janet, that I'm afraid it looks as though this committee is going to be party political, judging by the behaviour of the opposition tonight. Part 18.1. "If a member of the overview and scrutiny committee or a scrutiny subcommittee is subject to a party whip in respect of an issue to be considered by it, that member must declare the existence of the whip and the nature of it before the commencement of deliberations on the matter. The declaration and the detail of the whipping arrangements shall be recorded in the minutes of the meeting." Now, tonight, fellow councillors and ladies and gentlemen, you will have seen that the Conservative Party are whipped. I don't know whether anybody else noticed that when we called for a vote on who's going to be the leader of the council, several members of the opposition actually put their hands up in favour of councillor Adulovic being the leader of the council. I don't know whether councillor Owen is the whip for the Conservative group, but my goodness, he nearly got his whip out to tell them to actually put their hands down. You are not voting for him, you are abstaining or voting against. So we'll be watching very carefully at the overview and scrutiny committee, the Conservative group, because we know now that they're whipped. They're told how to vote. How can you have scrutiny when people are told how to vote? You cannot have proper scrutiny when that happens. You know very well why this council moved to go to a cabinet and strong leader model. It's because the county as a whole and all the districts within it, although, as you've mentioned, we're a little bit suspect now of the ulterior motives behind this, are moving possibly to a devolution deal. One of the recommendations and one of the requirements of the government are, which is why the county council have moved to the cabinet system and strong leader model, is that the government won't even look at an application for a devolution deal unless you've got an executive elected mayor or a cabinet with a strong leader. So that's why we've moved to it, to be in line with every single other authority in this county. Straightforward as that. It's not taken our eye off the ball at all. And to be quite frank, I don't see why us members of the ruling alliance should take any lessons from a Conservative politician at all about being dysfunctional. You know, members over there that support a crook of a prime minister, members over there that support a Chancellor the Exchequer, who until recently had a US green card, while the rest of us have been denied living and working in 27 European countries. And a Chancellor the Exchequer who has a wife that is a non-dom and until very recently, until pressurised, didn't pay tax in this country. And Nadine Dorris, the Culture Secretary, whose only contribution to culture and his only contribution...
Just a minute.
What does this to do with the constitution, Mr Mayor?
I'm answering your points. You raised them. Oh, okay. Thank you. Can I carry on, Mr Mayor?
And just keep it to the agenda, councillor Carr.
Just one more point. Nadine, because it's funny. Nadine Dorris. Nadine Dorris, whose contribution as the Secretary of State for Culture is eating various parts of a kangaroo, and I'm a celebrity, get me out of there.
Point of order, Mr Mayor.
I am not, I am not, I am not taking any lessons from members of the Conservative Party. Full stop. Thank you.
Councillor Carr, if you can.
And can, we have less of the argy-bargy here. If a member, whoever it is, is speaking, then the rest of everyone else needs to be quiet, doesn't matter who's speaking. Thank you. All right, if we go to the vote. All those in favour, please? All those against? Fifteen. Any abstentions? There's Carrie, 23. Fifteen and one abstention. Thank you very much, Carrie. We're on to item nine. "Appointments to Cabinet, councillor Rudovic. Can you provide for information, please? Thank you very much."
Chair, Mr Mayor, it gives me a great pleasure to move on to nine. The schedule is laid out before all members tonight. Again, I thank everybody for their help and support and participation. And perhaps, Richard, if you could just let me know whether or not you intend to take the role of vice chair of scrutiny or not. Because if you don't, I'll make an amendment and amend it item nine accordingly. I'm moving on to the article, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much.
And I'll second that, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that's just noted, obviously. We're on to item nine. Appointments to committees. Do I have a proposer, please? And then a seconder, please?
Sorry, we've just, where have we gone to?
No, you're on nine.
We have to vote on committees. Voter committees ask for them to vote on the appointments. We've had councillor Adulovic, he's done his proposal.
Yeah.
We had the seconder.
Yeah.
Who's who seconded?
Yeah. When councillor, he's got nothing else to say, right?
He's put the second. So councillor. Councillor Carr. So then it's going to be to speak.
Yeah. Okay. Councillor, leader of the council, would you like to speak?
Chair, are we on article ten?
No, we're on item nine. I'm only, excuse me, I'm going by what I've been given to go by.
So we've done that, appointment to committees has gone around.
So I'm number eight and number nine.
So now, we're on, we've done the appointment to committees, and we've done the vote, we've done that.
Sure, it's article ten, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So we're now on ten.
Well, I've got two sheets here, it's terribly different.
We're on ten now. Yeah.
And this one is appointments to committees.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Jump it back. So we've had the appointments to cabinet.
That's right.
Yeah. And that's what we've just done. So this is appointment to committees, which has been circulated.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So do we have a proposer? So we're asking councillor Adulovic to make his proposal for appointment to committees, which has been circulated to members.
Thank you very much, everybody. Quiet down, please. Thank you very much. Otherwise, we won't be getting on till midnight. Appointments to committees and... Just been circulated, as everyone knows?
The papers have been circulated to all committee memberships. And I've had no indication that they wish to rescind their position as vice chair. I've moved the paper later for us, as laid out tonight.
Thank you.
Just have a seconder.
Yeah, I've got a seconder, please.
Got it, it's a seconder.
It's got it, it's a seconder on here.
If it's a noting report, it's going to go through. Yeah.
I'll second that, okay.
And then, for now, move on. Report representation to next one.
Excuse me, can we have less noise over there while we're trying to sort a little problem out here? Thank you. If you're going to continue, I'm going to get angry and I don't want to do that. Representation of outside bodies. Do we have a proposer?
Again, you've had it circulated.
Mr Mayor, representation of outside bodies scheduled is laid out before all members tonight.
Thank you.
Including members of all political groups and parties to enable us to ensure that fair representation is made where it is possible.
Thank you very much. Second?
I'll second that.
Again, it's a noting report, we can move on.
Noted, and we can move on, yeah. Thank you very much. Community governments are reviewed. Do we have a proposer? Councillor Carr?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The community governments review started in June 2020. We appointed a task and finish group that met on many occasions and was very congenial. And we came up with several ideas. What became apparent during it, though, was the problems with regards to parishes north of the A610, which is extremely complicated. And we took the decision at the task and finish group that we would forward to this council recommendations for areas south of the A610, which you've got before you tonight. And we would actually start the process again for the north of the borough, north of the A610, either in September or October this year by formation of another task and finish group, although there might be another way to do it under the new structure. And whatever you do in the north of the borough, if you take an area off one council and give it to another because it makes geographical sense, the effect it has on the finances of those parish councillors can be very positive or very negative, on the other hand. And I think it's important that we get this right. And to enable to get that right, I think we need to be looking at this again with, possibly with fresh pairs of eyes to ensure that we don't actually make a mistake with regards to the culprits of Gurren of, let's base it, Kimberley, Nuttall, Greysley, Eastwood, and Brinsley, which is fairly, is a straightforward one anyway. So I would propose that we move forward in accepting the review for the south of the borough, south of the A610. Thank you.
And councillor Rudovic, would you like to second that? Thank you. Councillor Mel Crowe, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, yes. Certainly on behalf of the residents of Kimberley, I welcome this and will support it. You make the point about south of the A610, but the reality is there are far more parished areas in the north of the borough, of course, than there are in the south, which is why there has been the suggestion, certainly from Kimberley Town Council, of this going to review. And actually, I would slightly disagree. It isn't just, as you say about the money, some of what was being proposed made absolutely no geographical sense. And if you look at it, that is why certain parishes were quite up in arms. And certain residents as well felt very strongly about that. And ultimately, we welcome this. And hopefully, that consultation with the parished areas will continue when you undertake your review. Thank you.
Councillor Owen, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Gould and myself were part of the task and finish group. There was a lot of tasks, but unfortunately, I don't really think we finished. And I'm very disappointed that after all the time and effort that we put into that working group, we've reached this stage. We'll obviously, as councillor Crowe said tonight, be supporting the recommendation. But I do think it's important that we get on and sort out the boundaries in the north of the borough. They simply do not make any sense whatsoever. You can walk down one road in Nuttall and part of it's in one parish, part of it's in another parish. And yet the postal code is all Nuttall. And people, when you ask them, "Oh, we live in Nuttall". No, you don't. No, you don't. And this is just a nonsense. It's got to be sorted. And I'm afraid it's going to take some bold decision-making. And the real issue this time was that when we put out the initial consultations, there was only one parish that came back and said, "No, we're not particularly happy with that. This is what we are suggesting." The others didn't bother. And it wasn't until we'd reached the second stage, when we said, "These are the proposals that we are going to recommend", what do you think? That then town and parish councils came back with their own suggestions, which in a way, put us back to... put us back to square one. I would remind members of council that the Borough Council does have the power to recommend creations of parishes and parish councils, but it also has the power to recommend closure of parishes. And I think going forward, that is something that really seriously needs to be considered if we're to get the boundaries sorted, so that they make geographic sense, so that people are represented by parish and town councils in the communities that they not only live, but know they live. So it is a big task, but I hope we can get started on that again, and I would suggest going forward that the task and finish group, because we've now got so much experience and we know what the issues are, that that might still be the better way forward than a group of people starting from scratch.
Thank you, councillor Owen.
Councillor Lydia Ball.
Lydia Ball, councillor Lydia Ball, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, and by the way, congratulations on being made the mayor.
Thank you.
I'd just like to talk about Orsworth in May. I'm really pleased that Jinclos Way, I've been telling you, it looks as if it's going into the parish of Orsworth. For those of you that don't know, when you come off the A610, and you do a left turn, and you come up to Orsworth, and it was always a lovely road, there used to be a vehicle depot there, it was all surrounded by trees and hedges, it was a really nice green way into our village and Castle Village. Anyway, suddenly, one day, some, my phone never stopped ringing, and people were saying, 'They're chopping the trees down, down Jinclos Way.' So I went down there, of course, to try and stop them, which actually wasn't a very sensible thing to do, as it got cleared off. But the point is, those parts of Jinclos Way were not in our village, so therefore, when there was any development or somebody wanted to start a new business, which we won't talk about, we never had any say in it, because the plans were sent to Kimberley or to Greasley. And, you know, at the end of the day, we desperately would love to have that road coming up to Orsworth, looking green and tidy and a welcome to everybody. So I'm really pleased about that. But then I have to say, Orsworth Parish Council aren't too happy about losing the glebe because of losing some of their precept, and that's only because we have two very big recreation grounds to maintain, and I think you all know how expensive it is to maintain recreation grounds and keep them safe and buy new equipment and all that. So sometimes it's all swings and go roundabouts, but the fact that I just have to go back and say, 'Thank you for Jinclos Way, and we'll make sure that it's looked after, and there will be a massive improvement, fingers crossed.' Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ball. Councillor Janet Jackson, please.
Councillor Patrick.
Councillor Patrick.
I'm married to Ricky.
That'll liven the place up a bit.
I was on the task and finish group on the parish councils. It was very difficult, particularly for some of us that didn't know it as well as the people in the north did, and we spent a lot, it was exactly as Philip Owen said, and how difficult it is to getting responses. If we're to, I think we also put off some decisions because we saw it was so difficult. But I would ask that if we are to continue, the group that were dealing with it, I believe, were competent to carry on and not to have a new group.
Thank you very much, councillor Patrick. Councillor Carr?
Yeah, so thank you. Councillor Carr, you are correct in what you say, and yes, it's absolutely vital that we have early consultation, I think, with the parish councils. I think just leaving it to chance last time, and as councillor Owen pointed out, only one actually put forward suggestions until we came up with a blueprint, actually probably has been one of the main causes why this has gone on as long as it has. Of course, what then it meant was that people came with all these different scenarios and all these different boundary changes, and it didn't leave us any time to go to consultation before this meeting, so which is why we're in this situation. I hear what people are saying about keeping the same people on the committee, and I will agree with that, even though I said perhaps some fresh eyes, but I don't think, I think in hindsight, I don't think we've got time for fresh eyes. It's such a big, big job. With regards to Orsworth, I'm glad you're happy about that. Of course, the glebe, if the glebe had been taken into Orsworth, that would have meant that Castle, the parish council, wouldn't for now to function. And also, Castle Parish Council did a survey there, and I understand that 80% of the people in that area responded to it, and of those 80%, 100% of the people said that they wanted to remain in Castle. So we have to listen to those in the same way that we listen to the people in Babington Village, who didn't want, didn't want to be part of Orsworth, but wanted to remain in Kimberley, even though they have to go to, through Orsworth to get to Kimberley to vote, I understand, but that's what they wanted, so that's fair enough. But all these things will be taken into account. It's going to be a huge task, but it's one I think that we're going to have to grasp the nettle of before this particular council goes to elections in 2023.
Councillor Willamott, I'm going to allow you to speak because I...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to make one point about this exercise, which I did make in writing at the time, but I'm representing here Greasy Parish Council, I've just taken over the chairmanship of that council. If we own a sports and community centre, which most people understand, we've invested £150,000 in it of our own money, saved over a six-year period, plus money we got from Nottinghamshire County Council. If we'd wanted to stick another story on that, we put in a planning application, and the planning application would be considered by the planning committee, assuming he was called in, and we would be allowed to come and address the planning committee and express why we were trying to achieve that particular objective. Now, I can't see the difference between that and you or any other organisation trying to fundamentally change our parish boundaries, which the initial consultation that was put out would have had a very dramatic effect on our finances, but we were given no opportunity as we would for a planning application to come and address this task and finish group or any other group for that matter, and put out a case, so that some of those people who are from other parts of the borough and don't know our part of the borough very well, we could brief them. So that's a point I'd like to make. If we're going to go this round again, we would really like the opportunity to address the committee and explain the situation, but we were not given that opportunity. That's all I want to make. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Willamott. Councillor Carr, a brief, if you please.
Yeah, thank you. My understanding, understanding of the task and finish group is that all of the parishes, the town and parish clerks were notified of this review, which is actually a legal matter, the corporal, corporal gurus review, is something, there's a Borough Council we have to do every so often legally. I'm sorry that you feel like that, councillor Willamott, but councillor, you know, we did have lots of submissions from parish councils, Orsworth, Castle, Nuttall, Kimberley, Eastwood, and eventually we had them from Greasley, but right from the start, parish council were given the opportunity to let us know what their thoughts were. And I can tell you, and I'm sure that councillor Gould and councillor Owen will agree with this, we've considered those very, very seriously, and we will continue to consider submissions to us very, very seriously. If you want to come and address us personally, now that it's easier to do that, I've got no problem with you doing that, but obviously we'll have to offer the same to all the other parish and town councils in the north of the borough, which I don't think will be a problem. But, no, that's fine, but at the end of the day, we still need something in writing because this is a legal duty, and so we have to have an audit trail, so that if we have to justify why we've done something, that we've actually, can actually produce the evidence to justify why we've done it. So by all means, come and talk to us, but we will need a submission in writing as well. Well, I know you did, but it was too late, is what I've said. It came, it, sorry, it came, it came in...
Just a minute, just a minute. Councillor, councillor, if you have a problem, please sort this out after the meeting.
As I mentioned...
And get the correct information from councillor Carr, please, thank you.
As I've already mentioned, Chair, that some councils, and I won't, I won't name them, but some parishes and towns in the north were late with their submissions, which meant that we would have had to have gone to consultation again because they were fundamentally different to what we'd put out or what the councillor Williamson's committee had passed as a blueprint, and we just hadn't got the time to do a consultation before this meeting, which is why they were having to do those parishes and towns separately now again. Thank you.
That's okay, it's a sound phone in and as laid out, so...
We have to move to vote, unless now everyone else has spoken, we need to move to the vote.
I move to the vote, all those in favour, please.
I think we're unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you very much.
Item's carried.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's been carried, and I dearly conclude that this meeting is well and truly over. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, very outstanding, the Derry...